This regular meeting of the Montmorever Area School District Board of Education is called to order. It is seven o'clock. Roll call, Danny. Oh, I'm sorry. Diana.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
And Kimberly.
Here.
Great, terrific, thank you. Dr. Salerno, can you certify that this meeting has been properly noted?
It has.
Let's say the pledge of allegiance together.
The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. If not, I'll be happy to read it. The Montmorever Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing, and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society. Just a reminder tonight that we will not be using chat. We'll tell you how to join citizen comments in a moment, but we won't be using chat tonight. Item 2A, approval of the presented or revised agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Kimberly.
I'm sorry, Kimberly, who made the motion?
Diana, second.
Diana, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of the August 3, 2020 regular and executive session minutes. Motion to approve. Jeff has moved.
Motion to approve. Motion second.
Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the August 3 regular and executive session minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Rod, this is Diana, I abstain.
Diana abstains. Nevertheless, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the August 3, 2020 regular and executive session minutes are approved. Item 3A, school news. Is, what, is Allie's? I think we saw that she entered, Allie?
Yeah, thank you. All the extracurricular groups, now that we have a recommendation, have been working really hard to move our activities online, so hopefully we'll be bringing in the new freshmen and returning members strong when school starts and, you know, foster that sense of community that I know everyone's really ready to feel as we go back this September. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks very much, Allie. And Dr. Salerno, do you have anything to add?
Yes, this week is Viking Voyage Week. It's our annual professional development experience for staff, and this year's treasures in the voyage include a lot of how-to teach in a virtual learning environment. And we're grateful to Sarah Straka, as well as all of the teachers, in-house experts, if you will, who are offering their time and talents in order to make this be such a special week. And then I'd also like to extend a note of welcome to 11 new staff members. They complement our already stellar staff and can make us better. You know, Mr. Heiss, oftentimes when we hire people, I look for people who can make us better. There's something about them that makes us better, and having visited with them these past couple of days reminds me that the future of education looks very bright as a result of these fine folks. So, welcome to all of our new Vikings.
Thank you, Dr. Salerno. Is there any further school news? Hearing none, we'll move to item 3B, citizen comments. Those who are wishing to speak during citizen comments should text their first and last name and to 608-250-9166. Everyone should have memorized that number from last meeting. That's 608-250-9166. And we'll wait for our citizen commenters. We'll repeat the number while we're waiting, 608-250-9166. Are there any citizen comments? Are there any citizen comments? We see no citizen comments. We're reminded that there is a citizen comment period at the end of the meeting as well, and we can catch up with you then. Are there any further, excuse me, are there any citizen comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to personnel transactions. Dr. Salerno?
I don't believe there's anything above the ordinary with the exception of one about this time of year, board members, because we are looking to hire some last-minute individuals. We're asking that the board please provide the superintendent and our human resources coordinator the authority to go ahead and hire with the recommendations to follow at the next scheduled board meeting. Please, thank you.
Motion to approve. Jeff has moved.
Second, Diana.
And Diane has seconded a motion to approve the personnel transactions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Item number 5A and B, the consent agenda. Would anyone like either of these two items called?
Motion to approve, Kimberly.
Ms. Jessica, I second.
Kimberly has moved, I'm sorry Jeff being intuitive here, seconded the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Item 6. Sim say, committee member reports, the education committee, Kimberly.
Thank you, Rod. As you can imagine, the education committee is spending most of its time hearing virtual learning plans and updates, and that will likely remain our primary focus until in-person school resumes. Sarah updated us on the professional development occurring for our staff this month on blended learning, as well as more in-depth Google platform training that's occurring this week, and the instructional strategies that will be taught during next week's staff in-service. We also went over that each building has an internal work group of staff looking at what it could be, especially in regards to small group instruction time and building a feedback loop for students and families. In specific curriculum news, the elementary writing committee finalized K-5 student checklist to use with both students and parents, and the middle school purchase materials to support their new social studies standards. That's what I've got, Rod.
Awesome, thank you very much, Kimberly. Leah, Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee is on break for the summer, so we won't meet again until September, October.
Thank you. Hearing no other committee member, reports will move to 6B, the COVID-19 update. Dr. Salerno?
Good evening again, board members and community members on the call tonight. I'd like to ask if my friend and colleague Brian Johnson wouldn't mind joining us in just providing an overview as to the good work of one of our committees, one of our work groups that focused on special education, and in particular, what Virtual Plus means. I'm going to share my screen here, if that's okay with you, and Brian, if you don't mind sharing what you guys have in store for our students.
You bet. So, thank you very much. You know, our committee has been working really hard within the last couple of months, and we're hoping that this provides some clarity to what we're thinking, what our plan is moving forward. And so, it's a phased-in plan, kind of taking it one step at a time, with really looking at the safety and security of all students throughout this process. So, this is for all students with disabilities, right? So, for everybody, our goal is to ensure that all students are given access to general education curriculum, that everyone is making progress towards IEP goals, and that we're ensuring safety and well-being of staff and for students. When we're going into who should be a student in the Virtual Plus model, we're looking at going a little bit extra. So, the thought is that almost everybody will be in a virtual model, but there are some students who won't be able to, aren't able to engage in the virtual learning. And so, what are our goals for students in the Virtual Plus? So, it's to still provide access for educational opportunities for students who are unable to engage in virtual learning. It's to ensure that our most vulnerable learners are able to receive the most appropriate support, safety, and then the fundamental law of what special ed is is that we're giving students a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. So, things that we're really looking at is data, and we'll be doing that the first few weeks of school. How are students progressing? Or are they regressing in their skills, looking at their IEP goals? Safety, following all recommendations from public health, the state, and the federal guidelines. And as we know, this presentation, we could have a plan, and things could change in a week or two. We're always fluid with that. Implementing appropriate PPE and safety protocols, taking that first two weeks and really training kids on helping how to wear masks, what school will look like, trying to reduce some anxiety, and transition back into school, like, kind of, you know, trying to get them ready to come back. We're looking at reducing gaps, look at social and emotional learning, and then providing faith. So, starting September 1st, for all students with disabilities, these are the things that we're going to do. We're going to provide explicit teaching on how to use the learning platform, as well as appropriate internet behavior. And all of the things on this list came from families. So, what they wished were, that went well, that they wanted to continue going, or what didn't go well, that we really need to go better this upcoming year. So, this is all parent feedback, explicit teaching. So, if we're doing Google Calendar, how Google Calendar works, the actual platform, and then teaching the life skills, you know, what all kids need and all adults need is what is good internet behavior. Increasing our hands-on activities. It's hard to tolerate screen time, so at a minimum, doing more interactive projects. We can deliver those, we can look at those and help supply those, especially for younger kids. Looking at data and progress monitoring. Rigor needs to return for academic progress and success. Having a written documentation of what the week's going to look like. So, if they're going to meet with paraprofessionals and meeting with speech and language and meeting with OT and PT, what that plan is for the whole week, so that families know that. And then we have strong communication with parents about the plan. Consistent and scheduled meetings, one-on-one or small group. And then we're providing consistent feedback and responding in a manner that's quick. So, our goals for Virtual Plus Special Education is that it's a phased-in approach, looking at safety. We're providing instruction that's not able to be accessed in a virtual format. They're individualized decisions. We're providing instruction for students that are unable to access the technology, and then provide instruction for our students who are at their most vulnerable and at their most critical stages of development. And so, what is it not? So, really just being as crystal clear on this as possible, right? It's not for every student with an IEP. So, that's one of the things that started to happen and always, you know, in kind of situations is we'd like to request an IEP because students with an IEP get to come in all day, every day. And that's not how this is working. It's not for every student. It's not every day, all day of instruction. It's not blanket statements for students with all disabilities or a type of disability. It won't have large groups of students in a special ed room with multiple adults. It's not one-size-fits-all. And it's not a decision that'll be made within isolation. So, we'll involve parents, we'll involve guardians, school team members as part of this process. So, for Phase 1, starting the first day of school, when we talk about our most vulnerable and critical ages, it's really early childhood. And so, we're starting early childhood special education, day 1. All of the kids will continue to receive special education services for our most youngest learners, and also our students who are about to age out of our 18- to 21-year-old program. So, it's really important that they're getting their last year, that they're able to receive education, that we're in job coaching, we're in those situations. And then, our early childhood 4K, pre-K students who receive speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, those will be individual decisions. Some might have virtual instruction, but some might have in-person. But that could also start September 1st as well. So, then Phase 2 is approximately a few weeks later. So, we'll be data collecting, teaching skills along the way, and then starting in the mid-September, we'll look at students who are taught using the alternative learning standards, students who are not able to access general ed curriculum after we've tried different interventions, students who have an IEP goal around mental health and virtual counseling is not effective, and students who have regressed on IEP goals and not able to maintain attention in a virtual environment without support. And then our last phase is a phase that is still evolving, but we're going to have a rubric that's going to be of decision-making. We're sharing that with staff now to get feedback, and it'll have things like relationship building, progress, access, attention, behavior. We'll put all of those into a rubric, and then students who aren't meeting criteria or aren't doing well in the virtual format will look at increasing and having more access as of October 1st. We're not looking at all students, like I had said. We're looking probably to about a third of our students with IEPs being invited to come in to get services in person. But we're really looking at the kids who can't access it in a virtual format. If they're making progress, that's great. We want to keep that going. But just remember that we still are in a pandemic, and we're really looking at safety as the number-one component, but also making sure that kids are receiving their educational services. And so, that's kind of, that's what our team has thought a lot about, our staff has thought a lot about, and that's where, what we're thinking for special education services.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments for Brian?
Hi, this is Diana, I have a question, Brian. So, we talked about kids who have an existing IEP. How will we be identifying new students possibly needing an IEP or addressing those sorts of issues as we go through these first few months?
Yeah, so that's a trickier one because we do have, we have a significant backlog of students because we weren't able to come into the district, we weren't able to provide any services. And so, what our plan is for that is that as soon as July 1st hit, we number-one prioritized our youngest learners, so all of our early childhood students, because their education of having an IEP depended on if they were able to access any education or receive no schooling, right? So, they've, we've already completed all early childhood evaluations. Testing is all done, and now we're in the process of having meetings to determine eligibility. The next group of students is that we're going to start with the date that the parents sign consent, so back in March. And we're going to kind of do as quick, go through the process with fidelity, but as quick as we can through that. And our goal is to finish all evals and be caught up by December 3rd. So, we have a little bit of time, a few months, to be able to go through that. But that's going to be a lot of work that our school psychs, our speech and language paths, a lot of our teachers are going to be really doing in the next few months is trying to get through those. And effort from Jennifer Aney and myself too in that process. And as new ones come in, we'll continue to do that, but there is going to be a little delay, to be 100% honest.
So, and as you're deciding who will be coming in for Virtual Plus, I'm assuming that parent input will be considered and that as part of the team?
Absolutely.
Other questions or comments for Brian?
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, your team, for your nice job. I see maybe some folks have frozen tonight for having technological problems. Please know we are recording this program tonight, and we will definitely have it on our district's website as soon as we can. I hope you don't mind if I just go ahead and share a couple of other important items for the board's consideration this evening. You may, families have recall receiving a letter or an email this past week on August 11th, which just provided a high-level overview of what our instructional program would look like when we resume school on September 1st. And in that, you saw this link that led you to an overview as to what our schedule could look like on a typical day, broken out by early learning in primary centers on one page, all the way to the high school on the fifth and final page. This was developed in consultation with a number of key stakeholders within our district, and we think balances nicely what we understand to be best practice in terms of considering students' ability to stay online for extended periods of time. I've also layered into tonight's Board of Education agenda a number of important links for you. And if you don't mind me just walking you through a couple of them, just so that way you know that it's on our radar, and we're thinking of ways in which we can be of service to our families and our students. First, you'll find a device loan acknowledgement and agreement form. We are now in the process of just finishing final collection of all of the Chromebooks and all of the hotspots that we lent out this past spring, so that way we can begin the process of disseminating and then also identifying what additional devices we may need. And we're just asking people to take heed of this, note that we understand that when it comes to working with these kinds of technologies, that we understand there to be normal wear and tear, you know, missing keys, worn hinges, that kind of thing. I don't want parents to be nervous that if something breaks, say negligence, that they need to be on the hook for providing up a new Chromebook. That's just not the case. We want to put flexible in our families and get those in the hands of you all as quickly as possible. Each individual building is in the process of doing that now. At their last Board of Education meeting, the board considered something called a gradual reopening meeting. It's up for the board's consideration tonight. As a reminder, the board had asked back on July 27th as to whether or not we needed to establish certain metrics that would bring us into a hybrid or all-virtual environment. This was presented to the board last meeting on August 3rd, and asking the board to give it consideration this evening, so that way everyone is aware of what the benchmark uses, if you will, in returning back to school. And you'll find those various steps that I identified in this system. It's really based upon Public Health Medicine Dane County's dashboards. Also, I was asked by the board at the last meeting to develop an actual, an action plan for staff members to return to work. You'll see that as being an item for the board's consideration tonight under action, but if you don't mind me just taking a moment to speak to that. We understood that the board said that there were three priorities for them in bringing our staff back into the workplace. We heard from our board that teaching in the building is optimal, and that we want to provide as much flexibility for our staff members as possible. And then from time to time, some of course has really lent themselves to teaching in person. We also know that the board was not interested, at least on August 3rd, to motion or second and take the vote on having all staff members return to work full-time in our buildings. And that the administration was directed to provide a plan. The plan that you see before you on the link is really a design for the board to start as a launching point for discussions. It's not one that we necessarily feel is the only plan. We just felt like we were trying to gather the ideas and feedback of everybody on the team, so that way if the board wanted to take action on a plan, you certainly could. We felt like if there's any rationale for why we had a plan, it would be important to note that. And you'll find that on page 2. And then lastly, what are the expectations we have of our professionals while working in a remote location? You'll find those as well. And then, lastly, I wanted to take a moment to let folks know that we brought back what we thought was a pretty popular feature this past spring, and that was a frequently asked question document. We are keeping this as a living document, and I placed this on the front page of our district's website. And we've broken it right down now into three or four sections, instruction, what a potential schedule might look like, and then differentiating it between each of our work groups. What are some of the online tools that we're providing? What are some professional development we've been providing to staff? And then differentiating it even for the middle and high school. And then you'll also see questions that we've been fielding from families with regard to what we call asynchronous learning, which is really the recording of videos and watching them later at people's own leisure. We will have some opportunity to do that. Questions about waivers from the Department of Public Instruction and the like. Technology is also a factor that we know is a frequently asked question, so we've embedded that into the system. And then school nutrition, right now, is also on the minds of our folks. In order to get access to many of these materials, I encourage you to go to our district's website, montmorev schools.org. Scroll down to the middle portion, and you'll see a box here called virtual learning. And it has access to information around mental health and wellness supports for students and families right now during this trying time, as well as those aforementioned frequently asked questions, and then key questions and feedback with regard to how our learning may look going into the fall. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that folks might have of me.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, this is Diana, I have a question. I know we'll be taking attendance, and I was wondering if we'd heard back regarding the truancy law in Wisconsin?
Thank you. We have not received any official word from the Department of Public Instruction. Because it is a statute, it must still be honored. However, the board does have a policy that allows us to use our good judgment as leaders in order to find and seek cause in an accepting way and then accommodate students and families appropriately. We spent a awful lot of time around this concept of attendance as an administrative team and talking with students and staff, and we have elected to go ahead and take attendance each day. And you may say to yourself, well, why would you do that? And it's one more vehicle for us to be able to ascertain how students are doing. And if they're not in the, if they're not in the classrooms or they're not involved in lessons, they're not completing work, this gives us one more tool to determine who we need to be reaching out to in support of those young people. So, we'll be doing that, just like we do every other day when we take attendance when we're in buildings. We want to do the same thing while we're in the virtual environment too.
Other questions?
Other questions for Steve on item 6B? Other questions for Steve? All right, hearing none, then we'll move on to item 6C, long-range facilities plan update on end of summer buildings and projects. Mr. Reed?
Good evening, everybody. So yeah, the projects that we've been working on this summer are beginning to wrap up. There are a number of them that are complete or near-complete, others that, due to a delay in manufacture, a delay in shipping, you know, we're maybe a week behind, but for the most part, everything is on track and looking to finish up in the next week or so. I can run down the project list that we started with. Start at the high school, oxygen cooling, that is basically complete. We're waiting on some final programming from our controls people. The soffit panels at the high school are complete. The gutters are on site, they'll get put in next. Picture A, Steve has a picture of the nice new soffit panels that are at the high school. Much nicer, cleaner look. In that upgrade, we also were able to seal the envelope of the building. Over the years, some of the insulation had deteriorated, fallen out, and caused a lot of air infiltration into a lot of our classrooms and offices. So that was attended to, so the envelope is a much tighter sealed-wise now. The next one is the crosswalk. That's nearing completion. You can see next to the cones there are some standards. The next thing to be installed are some flashing signs. So much like you see at other crosswalks, a pedestrian can walk up, press a button, it will activate lights in both directions to alert motors that there's somebody waiting to cross there, all solar-powered. That should be installed later this week. The art lab sinks still are causing me some vexation. I think I'm learning a lot about plumbing. I'll get those things wrapped up here pretty quick. Interior doors, we're waiting for install. They're on order, they should be here shortly. LMC carpet is complete. Wall packs that were for the crosswalk have been complete for quite some time. At the middle school, the standing seam roof is nearing completion. I don't know if you've been by there to see that. Looking good, they're putting the ridge caps on it right now and buttoning up some of the last little bits of flashings and things like that. Very nice upgrade. The, one of the problems with the original roof is that, in our estimation, it was installed incorrectly. What we get from construction people is that was the method of the day in 1993, but the new one is more in line with what we would expect it to be today. Paving and the parking lot, site work at the middle school is complete. Picture D there. You can see we've got a nice new playground, new basketball hoops. There's some fitness equipment that we got as a grant that has been installed behind the fence. The fence has been reworked and replaced. Lot of four-square and virtual volleyball courts out there. As I understand it, Mr. Christensen is quite happy with the way it looks, and be nice to see some kids out there playing on that. Also at the middle school, the loading dock canopy is installed. They've got some metal work to do on that. When the picture comes up, the yellow stands right there are basically just to hold the canopy in place for now. Those will be gone, and there'll be some supports that tie back into the wall up above there, so that'll be just free and clear underneath. That should be completed here in the next week or so. Lockers, that was what I was referring to as far as delays. Evidently, the factory in North Carolina was having some worker issues related to COVID, pushed them back a bit. Then they had a hurricane run through there and pushed them back a little bit more. We were expecting lockers to begin last week, but they actually began installing them today. At the IC, we're mostly complete there. They're wrapping up a few little things. There was some damage to a sidewalk that occurred that Kramer Brothers is taking on to repair. But the roof is complete. The window leaks are taken care of. The envelope repairs are complete. Paving is complete. The lighting on the building is complete. Lighting in the bus loop, all complete. So basically, the IC is wrapped up and ready to go. At the PC, some Mount Hore School District managed projects. A sidewalk, you've seen pictures of that in front. Some curb repairs that we're waiting on, things to get in their schedule. At the ELC, again, you've seen pictures of that before, but all the walkways in front and back have been replaced. And I did take a chance to drive around there today, and the landscaping is coming in nice. So all very nice upgrades for walking between those buildings. So that's about it. Everything that we set out to do is, like I said, either complete or very near completion.
Thank you very much, Dave. Questions for Dave?
It might be helpful just to acknowledge several of the items that we budgeted for because we did not need to go as far as we needed to. For example, with the IC at the windows, there's some dollars that are remaining there. And while it's too soon to determine how much money is remaining from the project, there might be another opportunity for us to come back to the board and say, "Here's another slate of some additional projects that we can get ahead of as well." So we've really been in a good spot financially with this as well. And a tip of the hat to Dave Reed and his amazing team throughout the summer, not only partnering with Kramer Brothers, but then also completing some of these projects themselves. Another job well done, Sir Dave.
Thank you, everybody.
Any questions for Dave? All right. Hearing none, then we'll move on to item 7A, school safety and mental health of students and staff work group. Consider a motion to, consider amending the student dress code.
Board members, you may recall, this was born out of our conversations within each of our work groups, and it really reflects the recommendation of the work group around school mental health and safety to include language about wearing masks here at school. And we'd ask for your thoughtful consideration there, please.
Motion to approve.
Seconded, Kimberly.
Kimberly has seconded, or was this first reading?
It was read last.
It was not. Great. So Danny has noted, and Kimberly has seconded a motion to amend the student dress code. Is there any discussion?
This is Leah. We had talked last meeting about maybe changing it instead of saying face coverings to say requires PPE in case the PPE that they want us to do becomes different, and that we wouldn't have to revise it again?
We understood that it said face mask before, and by changing it to face covering, that met with the team's needs, but we'd be happy to adjust as appropriate?
And I, I mean, I don't have a preference one way or another. It's just the more generic we kind of make it, the easier it is for us to not have to review it again. But I don't have a hard preference.
And certainly, we'd be happy to make that change here, but it would be amenable to someone who wanted to make a motion tonight.
So I guess, I think what we're, what we're asking is we either table it and reconsider it at another meeting, or Danny could include an amendment in her motion if she wanted to. But that's only, I'm not, I'm not, those are the options.
I'm okay with it the way it is.
Okay. We do have a, we do have a motion and a second. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the dress code is amended. Item 7B, Title IX policy updates.
Board members, this certainly comes as no surprise to you as you've been reading in the newspapers that public institutions, particularly school districts and universities, are to amend their Title IX policies to reflect several changes. And we have vetted this through our Safety and Wellness Committee as well as our Personnel Committee, and then lastly, through our school district's legal counsel to come up with the, a language you see before you. This would be a first reading, and would be applicable to both our students and to our staff. There is not, quite frankly, a lot of room for us to move in terms of language because it is pretty prescriptive coming from the Department of Education, but certainly, where there are questions, I'm grateful that we have Brian Johnson and Sarah Urther on the call with us this evening.
Motion to approve.
Seconded, a motion to approve these updates for our Title IX policy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call as it's first reading, first, yeah, first reading. Danny?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
And I'm gonna, I guess, as well, the first, the first reading passes, Dr. Shalano.
Thank you.
Item 7C, consideration of employee return-to-work implementation plan.
Board members, just going back to the document that we had shared with you earlier this evening, let me see if I can't pull that back up for us, and see if maybe we can't answer any questions you may have. Just a moment, please. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I guess I'll just ask in general.
So Steve, are you looking for a motion to approve this one?
Yes, please, but I understand maybe there might be some questions to answer that.
Jessica, go ahead.
This is Jessica. I was just gonna ask in general how the numbers and how the plan was developed.
Yes, thank you. The plan was developed in a number of ways. First, we sat down and visited with our Public Health Madison and Dane County officials to ask the question, is there any reason why they believe we should not be in the schoolhouse right now? Questions like, if I'm a teacher and I'm working in my classroom, and I'm by myself in the classroom, maybe there's 900,000 square feet or so, does that necessitate me having to wear a mask? And the answer to that question was no. It's when we're together, or we have others who are nearby us that we want to keep the mask in honor order number eight under Public Health Madison Dane County's order. We did talk with teacher leaders and asked them to share their insights and their feedback. We have visited with other superintendents around the region about their plans, and you'll note the feedback I received from them under the administrative content of board docs. And we've also talked with building principals and asked them really, what's the need right now to have staff within our buildings? We arrived at some general feedback, as you'll see here on the screen tonight, as a launching point for the board's discussion, and not really an endorsement of any specific plan. We do know that we want to monitor this and let the feedback from Public Health Madison Dane County to tell us whether or not we need to, and it's okay to. It's still safe to ask colleagues to either increase the number of hours based upon what we see from October 12th thereafter. And then, as you know, second quarter begins on or around November the 7th or so. And so how do we set the conditions such that people are feeling safe enough, well enough, comfortable enough to begin working if we are going to phase in according to the plan that I proposed to the board? That we do so incrementally, in a progressive pathway. And so this is just general numbers for the board's consideration. We're happy to make adjustments as we see appropriate, or if you think that this is appropriate as it stands, we certainly welcome any feedback.
So I have a question, please. The motion that we considered last time around was really focused on instructional delivery. So if you get up to the 15 or 20-hour mark, the language here says this is the minimum number of hours per week on-site.
On-site.
On-site. This, what do those hours, the 15 hours a week, 20 hours a week, what does that look like in terms of instructional time? Is it as a percentage of all time?
Thank you. When you look at the plan that we developed, let me see if I can't pull it up for you. Here, for example, this is the elementary level. We're looking at actual direct instruction, I think is your question.
Right.
And I didn't do the math, but if I hazard a guess, it's about 65% to 75% of the time is direct instruction, save for Wednesdays when we're doing individual small group check-ins, professional development, the like. Our staff, to be clear, would still be working their full schedule. They'd still be working 40 hours per week, most of them, and would be appropriated based upon their full-time equivalency or FTE. But that, to, a couple of board members suggested when we visited last week, flexibility was really important. And so, while most of the instruction in the building learning schedule is going to occur between 8 and 1 in the afternoon for elementary, and 11 and 4 for the secondary, we would advise, to meet that requirement that was made for putting together this schedule, we would advise that our professionals work in consultation with their building principal to determine where that delivery of instruction take place. For some, if the direct instruction occurred at this time, for some, it might be that, you know, it's better for me to do this at home and make the personal phone calls to families and the like at the schoolhouse. For some, it is the opposite. We want to honor the board's recommendation at the last meeting to allow staff members to work with their respective building leaders to determine what is the right schedule. This is the minimum number of hours, by the way, it should be noted, per week. We imagine that there'll be many who will want to be there more. In fact, we know of several staff members who've been in their classrooms, busily preparing for the school year already. And we also know that there are some who are very nervous about that because of their own health needs. And we, again, under the consideration for health concerns, we will certainly have those kinds of continued ongoing conversations with our employees to make a decision that's right for them. But this was something that the board had requested of us on August 3rd, and we just wanted to kind of put something there as a launching point for conversation.
And remind me what the asterisks mean?
Yes. So the asterisk here means that we want to assume that it's safe for employees to do so, to come back, and that it would be on their full-time equivalency. And that it's our thought that eventually, when you look at these dates, it may mean they could be asked to return full-time to their, or their equivalent assignment on or around October 12th if it remains safe to do so. But that's the will of the board.
Other comments or questions from the board?
This is Kimberly. I'm just still thinking about these very specific minimum hours. And I know you said you worked in consultation with people, but I'm still not understanding how the specific hours themselves were determined. I see that it's a gradual increase, but how did we start? Go on, where was the, patient for the starting point for August 24th?
Yes, thank you, Kimberly, and that's really why I've... And that's really why I'm grateful that we have you as the Board of Education to determine what those hours would be. We just put those hours in there as a basis for just having a plan and letting you know that we've been as thoughtful as we can about it. Ultimately, you tell us what you think is appropriate, and we'll put you in.
What, what, Dr. Salerno, what are, what are some other districts doing in terms of this kind of expectation or requirement? And then the hours that, that are involved?
Yes, you'll see inside the executive content of the Board Docs, I took some time to survey several school districts, about 20 school districts around the region. And you'll see what they wrote. It is in private view tonight, because some of the information has not quite been satisfied yet by their Boards of Education. But there are some who are still in the process right now of, of trying to determine what they're going to ask their staff to do. In some districts, they are requiring their staff to come back in full, all five days a week, eight hours a day. In some instances, there are some school districts that are providing childcare reimbursement for those families who are impacted. There are some school districts, they're suggesting that they do not do anything at all. But this is a document that is as of, I think I did this back on August 6th. Yeah. I called each of these superintendents and asked them to, to tell me where their heads at and what they're doing.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
So I wonder, looking at the first block of time, it looks like it's about a week for the eight-hour requirement. Is that what I'm seeing?
That's correct. This will be a four-day work week coming up, the week of August 24th, as well, the second week will be a four-day work week as well, like Labor Day.
My only thought was, given the nature of the virus, that maybe that should be a two-week span, as opposed to one week, just to see how that all works with a, a, a small number of hours to start.
So make both eight hours on the 31st?
I'd have to go back into it, hang on.
Let me, I'll, I'll share my screen.
I just think two-week blocks of time makes sense. I also want to stress that I think we need to be flexible so that we can allow the, the most number of students in the building as we're developing this plan.
So with the exception of August 24th, it is in two-week blocks, as you can see, August 31st, September 8th, at 10 hours, and then 15 hours, and then 20 hours. Would you propose moving the 24th and 31st to eight hours? Or what, what would be your pleasure?
She just froze. I don't know, she did.
Hey, Steve or Rod?
Yes.
I've been bumped out of this meeting about a half a dozen times since it started. Can you catch me up on what's happened over the last couple of minutes or so? Just briefly?
Sure. So, a couple of things, Danny. So, Dr. Salerno, I answered a couple of questions about the basis for, for the hours and, and the start of the hours at eight hours on August 24th. And right now, I'm there with some, I had a question about what other, what other districts are doing. And then right now, Diana is sort of working through whether or not we should start the first two weeks at eight hours rather than eight and 10.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Diana?
This is Kimberly. I have another question about...
No, go ahead, go ahead. I don't know. Diana, are you ready or?
No, go ahead, Kimberly.
Okay.
Thanks. I was just looking at the PDF of the gradual reopening plan, and then the page, I guess it's page six, the draft criteria for moving from step two to step three. It looks, and then the seven-day average of new cases. So, to Diana's point of doing two-week increments, that seemed right. And I sort of assumed that the in-person time might begin when we see a declining trend. But it's my understanding that that's not what's on the proposal.
Correct. Right now, Public Health Madison Dane County has indicated to us if the Board of Education wanted employees to come back full-time, it was safe to do so. This is not, what you're referring to is about our return of our students. There, we might not be able to control for things like physical distancing. Obviously, when you have as many square feet as we do in our buildings, we can control for physical distancing a little easier with adults than we can children. And so, save for only August 24th, every other increment increase is based around a two-week timeframe. So we'd be happy to make whatever adjustments. Again, just a launching point for discussion, certainly not an endorsement of any one specific plan.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments?
So I, I have a question. This is an action item. Are you looking for a motion tonight?
Yes.
And are you looking for a motion to approve? I guess my question is, the word "could" is used in a couple of key places. Are you wanting it approved that way so that, because that's pretty open-ended?
This was a, a recommendation or a requirement that the school superintendent put together an action plan for the board's consideration. And that's what you see here tonight. If the board elects to make a motion tonight on this, then that "could" would change to "should." I just was putting it as a basis for your, for your conversation tonight. You can, you can say anything you wanted to say.
Got it.
We do know that our staff is hoping to get some kind of response, because of course, as you might imagine, if we have little ones trying to cover their childcare needs would be unfortunate.
So I, I will move that we approve this plan, changing the word "could" where it appears in at least two locations to "should."
Or "will." Okay, Danny has moved. Is there a second? I will second the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
I think it would be... This is Kimberly, hold on.
I'm sorry, Kimberly. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, we requested two-week notice. As in America, it seems that we would give the same for coming back. That was...
I don't, I don't see it.
Can you say that again, Kimberly? You cut out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, it's a little cut out today. But when, when someone leaves a, an, a place of employment, we expect a two-week notice. And I, I just think that a minimum of two weeks to arrange their childcare and their personal orders would be starting them off on a more solid footing for the school year. A motion, so you can continue that, Rod.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed will...
Aye.
I think I heard four ayes? Four ayes. Those opposed will say no?
No.
No.
The ayes have it at four, the noes were three. The motion carries, and the Employment Return to Work Implementation Plan is approved. Item seven D, consider, consideration of approval of the MHASD gradual reopening plan. So I think we, we, we covered this in Dr. Salerno's report. One thing that I've been thinking about when it comes to this gradual reopening plan is that the, the plan is very much married to, and I think in, in large part for good reason, very married to the, to the, to the Public Health Dane County numbers. One, one of the things that I'm struck by, though, and it goes back to the discussion that we had two weeks ago, is there are factors. So the, the question I've been asking, asking myself is, where do we account for changes outside of, of the disease? Like, how do we, how do we account for, if we sense real sort of fundamental trouble in terms of the social and emotional well-being of our, of our kids? Does, could that cause an acceleration? And, and so, I, I think we have to leave ourselves a little bit of, of flexibility and not just say, we're going to be entirely tied to the, to the public health numbers when there are other factors that are going on in, in educationally and instructionally and otherwise that, that are not accounted for anywhere in those, in those, in those numbers.
I would agree with that.
So I'm, I'm not sure exactly what... I, I think it needs to be tighter than simply, or at the discretion of the Board of Education, because that's, that's, I don't think that's appropriate. But there ought to be some kind of, of hurdle that's met that would allow us to exercise our discretion as a school board outside of the, the Dane County Public Health numbers.
The board absolutely could elect to, to close schools if they so chose. That's within your purview. What you could not do is to open the schools if Dane County Public Health says...
Listen.
Right? And so, you already have that authority based upon whatever metrics you think would be important to include. And certainly, this again, just as a basis of conversation, feel free to adjust or add to it. I just was trying to be responsive to a request that was made back on July 27th to have something for the board's consideration.
And I'm, I'm not poking holes in the, in the, the, the plan.
I'm sure.
I, and if we can't do it, we can't do it. But there's a lot more going on than just, just the other stuff.
Wouldn't be something we want to include in there.
Well, I, I think we, we, I think we would want to do, I think we want to do some sort of ongoing assessment of the, the, the health and wellness, the, the emotional and, and the social and emotional well-being of, of kids. And I'm not, I mean, I know that's a pain in the, in, but it's gotta, it's, I, I think we've got to get to a place where we're, where we're measuring, we're trying to measure how kids are really doing. Because I, I, I mean, I said two weeks ago, four weeks ago, whatever it was, that that is the chief thing, that we have no idea what's gonna happen. We don't. If someone can tell you what's gonna happen in our student population, legal, virtual, I, they, I don't know how they can do that. And so, we, we've got to, we've got to be able to account for that in terms of how we manage the operations of, of providing education to kids. And it's, it's, I, the, I think the, the, I'm totally, I'm with you on the gradual, the gradual plan. I just, I just, I just worry about what actually is going on with kids in terms of, of how, how we're delivering instruction, and what, what's that, what's that doing to them? Then what's the solution to that, right? So, I don't know.
There's two things that hopefully might provide hope to that and for us to gauge that. The first of which is what we heard tonight at the Safety and Wellness Committee about surveying our students. And Brian Johnson, if you're still on the call, he might speak to some of the plans that we have to do, the screenings. But then secondly, you know, the Community and Legislative Engagement Team is going to be meeting to develop a survey that would go to families sometime in mid to late September for us to gauge the very thing that I think I hear you saying, Mr. Heiss. So that way, when the board does make a decision on or around October 5th about a potential gradual phased reopening, we have those two data sets that can help us in making that determination. Brian, can you speak to what we'll be asking? You're working with University of Wisconsin-Madison on this piece?
Yeah, so we're meeting with University of Wisconsin-Madison this week, either Thursday or Friday, about doing a screening tool for grades and, for individuals in specific grades around mental health to see where they're at and how they're doing. Students would fill out that form. We would do it for every student within a grade level. Any student that comes back with concerns, then we would address as a staff, and then make a plan moving forward to support them. We also talked about going bigger than that, too, right? Like asking, having educators ask random questions if they want, if they need some support, if they want somebody to reach out. Doing it more often. We also talked about doing some curriculum, especially with the older kids, like a Learn to Breathe type curriculum on some of the small group times, and having students choose to sign up for those courses and that kind of program, so that we're offering some additional student services supports and, and activities for kids to engage in.
For Stan, correct. Even if we, even if we had some sort of crisis, and let's say, I mean, whatever the crisis is, forget about, I mean, forget about the subject matter that we've been talking about. But from what I understand, is if we had some kind of crisis and we wanted to bring our kids back into school, we wouldn't be able to do that until Dane County Public Health moved to Phase Three.
No.
No?
Dane County Public Health has actually already allowed students to come back to school. What schools are struggling with was their ability to keep kids physically distanced given the square footage. So a hybrid model, we think, could have worked for us because we had about 30% of our students. Yeah, so just as to physical distancing right now, Public Health Madison Dane County isn't saying you can't have kids in the schoolhouse.
Okay. I jumped to another.
Well, that's fair. It's confusing, isn't it? It's really confusing.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question about the slides. Now, let's see if I can get back to it. On slide number five, it talks about the criteria for moving from step one to step two. And the last two are all instructional staff are trained in virtual blended learning framework. And then the last one says all students and staff have access to instructional technology. Seems to me that those should be precursors before we even begin step one. So I just wondered about their placement in the slides.
Thank you. And right now, since early August, several, I want to say 80-plus staff members have been volunteering their time in the evening in order to participate in training about how to be even more engaging in a virtual blended learning model. And this was something we heard loud and clear from our community in the survey that was sent out in late May, early June. And as you know, we also are disseminating instructional technology to students and staff. You've, you may have seen some of the information that had been shared with the board in this evening's packet about just that. We think we are a good spot in addition to what happened in early August. But then, of course, what we're doing for training with our staff, we've heard Viking Voyage Week this week. And then all next week, August 24th, you can see from the weekly agenda that I sent to the board, we are hitting it hard in instructional technology. Not just the mechanics of it, but the actual how-to, create even more engaging lessons for our, our, our young people. So I think we're really gonna be in a much better spot come September 1st than we were on March 13th.
This is Leah. I have a question. So this is for moving in forward. What is our plan if we had to move backwards? Like, do we have an idea if all of a sudden we go hybrid and a whole classroom breaks out? Are we going to... Do we have a plan, or is that a separate, whole separate document?
Thank you for asking that question. That's one on the minds of all of us. And you may recall, we had... Excuse me, you may recall, we had 11 work groups that focused on various topics. And I know how engaged you are, particularly in the good work of that team. And they had developed several protocols in line with CDC, the Department of Health and Human Services, as well as Public Health Madison Dane County to address such an outbreak like that. There's no hard and fast rule in terms of how to proceed, just simply because there'll be some instances whereby people may have contacted, not contracted, the virus and might still be able to provide virtual instruction without having to take time away. But there are some people who have contracted the virus and may not be in a physical position to teach. And so when we know that there's been actual contracting, it's very different than what we do with someone who is contacted. And the work group did a really nice job of kind of establishing those general protocols. Every circumstance really has to be viewed individually and understand that it's not just black and white. There's a great deal of gray in some of this. And those protocols that you thought Lee referenced, Leah, exactly do spell those out for us.
Rod, back to your point earlier about, you know, how we know about the metrics that are other than what, you know, Dane County Public Health is sharing with us. Something, this doesn't necessarily relate to how we could immediately bring everyone back, but things, other things we might want to look at for our own knowledge as we think about how this impacts our students going forward, especially if this lasts longer than we all hope that it does, is, you know, we could look at the numbers of our students who are enrolling in co-curricular activities compared to in better times. We can look at how many students are applying for early graduation. We can look at some different things to say, wait a second, you know, normally we have 50 kids doing this and now we only have 25. How do we reach out and do something different and better? You know, there might be things like that that we can look at that won't necessarily result in us immediately bringing everyone back, but thinking about other ways that we can try to reach students.
Thank you, Jessica.
Are you looking for a motion to approve?
Yes, please.
So moved.
This is Leah's second.
Danny has moved and we have seconded that we approve the MHASD gradual reopening plan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the gradual reopening plan is approved. Items 8A, citizen comments, those wishing to speak should please text their first and last name and address, I guess, to 608-250-9166. That's 608-250-9166. No, no one yet, but we'll wait just a minute because... Just because. 608-250-9166. Whoops, someone is claiming their ham now. You got one, Steve?
CJ Goodwin.
CJ! Go ahead, CJ. Yeah, I'll be glad when we're done with these meetings. CJ! Brooke, did you want to speak?
Hi, yes. Can you speak for me?
If you wanted to speak, go ahead.
Okay, so thank you again. I always appreciate your hard work behind the scenes efforts of figuring all this out. A mom of children, this is a difficult situation. And I feel like had we known sooner that to look for childcare, a lot of us would be feeling maybe more supported. There's a lot of staff that have young kids that are going to be struggling to find childcare. And I know that this is true for all parents that have school-aged children that have to go back to work. We're in tough times, but giving us more than just a couple of weeks to figure this out would have definitely been appreciated. It's just really, this is a hard time. I, as a school counselor, yes, I worry about our students, I worry about our staff, okay? I have spent all summer attending multiple meetings every week virtually. I've attended many, many trainings virtually. I've done a couple of books for future book studies. And one was called Kids in These Days. And it was fantastic. But the whole point of the book was, in order for our kids to be okay, the adults who are teaching them and connecting with them need to be okay. And I am worried about our staff. I'm worried that the decisions we are making are gonna put even worse stressors, anxiety, frustration on our staff. I don't have the answer. None of us have the answer. I know that. This is a tough time. But I really think had we had more of a plan earlier on, our entire community... I don't want to be thoughtful with my words. Our entire community would be more supportive as to what's happening. It's August 17th now, we'll start September 1st next week. I just learned tonight that next week I have to be in my building for at least eight hours minimum. I'm now gonna have to look for childcare. There's just a lot going on, and I know that you guys can empathize with that, and I know there's not an easy solution. But I think people sometimes are scared to speak up and say, hey, this really stinks. But it does. It's not that I don't appreciate your work and your efforts. I absolutely do. I'm so glad I don't have to make the decisions you're making. But I've been able to do a lot of work, a lot of work, from my house virtually this summer, as have all of my colleagues. And we are making this work because we care about these kids. And these kids will be okay because as staff, we love them, we care about them, we want what's best for them. And we are gonna do everything we can to ensure that they have a school year, a successful school year, that they feel connected to their classmates, that they feel connected to their teacher. It's just, it's really frustrating that we had to wait until August 17th to get a plan in place. And again, I know that it's COVID-19, it's the way it is. But I would have really regretted not saying anything if I had just let this go. Because I do worry about our staff. And I know that in order for our kids to be okay, our staff has to be okay. And I am worried right now that that's not the case. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Brooke. Who's up? Kristen Williams? Okay. You're up.
Hello. I just wanted to kind of echo what Brooke had said. There were two thoughts I had when we were talking about having staff be back in school. And the first thought that didn't seem to be addressed is the why. I'm curious as to why we would require this. If this is work that can be done at home, isn't it safer for everyone for it to be done at home? And the second thought I had is that in going all virtual, we're basically asking parents and their employers to be very flexible, right? And then as an employer, if Mount Hora area school district is not equally flexible, that seems to be inconsistent and doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I just wanted to share those thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else at this point.
All right, are there any additional folks for student comments tonight? That number is 608-250-9166. Going once. Going twice. That's all. All right, item nine, future agenda items, you can see. Holy cow. Item 10, scheduled next meetings. Are there any questions about that schedule? Item 11, closed session. A contemplated closed session per section 19.85, paragraph one, sub-paragraph F. Considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons where par paragraph, sub-paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. I'll entertain a motion. Jeff has moved.
This is Leah's second.
Leah has seconded a motion to adjourn to closed session as outlined just a moment ago. This is a roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's yes. And IMES, the motion passes and we will adjourn to closed session in five minutes. Do we have another dial-in?
Yes, the link was provided in your weekly update, board members. If you'd like me to resend it, please let me know. I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.